Gold Beach, nature's wild side. It's become a tradition. Gold Beach Glass Float Season February 1st through April 30th. Thousands of floats are placed along the beach. Find one and it's yours to keep. Find out more at visitgoldbeach.com. Gold Beach, nature's wild side.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated at your floor, please.
Senator Brenner, position one.
Lady Brennan, position two.
Senator Campbell, position three.
Janice Kaufman, position four.
Ms. Carl Popoff, Mayor. And for the record, position number three, Councilor Pagano is out with illness this evening. We also have, of course, our city administrator, Jody Preger. So I want to start with making an announcement, something that I've been making for the last couple of months, or will be at least, well, off and on for a while now. And that is, we currently have vacancies in all of our commission committees. And once again, which is the budget, the planning, and the urban renewal advisory. If you live within the city limits and would like to volunteer for your community, we would certainly love to have you. Real quickly, budget meets once a year. Well, actually, it can go to two days, but it is not something that takes an awful lot of time, yet it is very important. And generally speaking, we have our budget committee meetings in April. Get ready for the next fiscal year, which begins in July, July 1st. Then we have the planning committee. This one generally meets once a month on the third Monday and at roughly the same time, usually right around 6:30. At present, we have three members. We have room for five. With three members, if one is missing, we don't have a quorum, and no business can be conducted, which of course means that whatever is brought before them has then been delayed, and people can be also delayed in doing what they would like to do. All right. And then we have the urban renewal advisory. Some of you know that we have a urban renewal agency. It consists of the city council and four lay members. At present, we don't have any lay members that I'm familiar with or that I know of. Now, this is also important because those four members also contribute their ideas as to how we are spending the money, what we are doing to enhance the beauty and what have you of our city. If no one volunteers, and you have left it up totally to the city council. So if people leave it up totally to the city council, if they have any rights or complaints afterwards, as far as I'm concerned, that's just too bad, because you had your chance, and we've asked you time and time again. Now, when I say "you," I'm talking about a universal or Catholic you. In short, I'm not looking at you particularly and saying, "Daguna folks, step up," or what have you. All right? So at any rate, if you know anyone, or if you yourself would like to participate in the governance of this city, we would sure love to have you. There are applications that you can get at the office and fill them out. Come before us, tell us a little bit about yourself, and by golly, generally speaking, you'll be honored. Okay? I wanted to get that out because at least for all of us up here, to have community support and input is very important in each and every one of these three committees and commissions. So with that in mind, I'm going to move to citizens' comments. Generally speaking, we have, if we're going to have comments, we'll have somebody, or if you're going to comment on anything, then you would fill out a request up there at the table, and then bring it to me. So first of all, is there anyone who would like to make a comment before the city council?
One, two, three, four.
All right.
I have a paper right here. I want to have a hand up for each of you.
Okay.
Should I get one?
Mr. Mayor, I know that you know who Ms. Dixon is, but I would like to introduce the, right over here.
I was getting ready to do that.
Okay.
No, but that's okay. You feel, you guys work pretty closely together, and I think it's only appropriate that you would make that introduction, but I was going to do that.
Okay. Lindsey Dixon is, if you recall, I think at the meeting before last, we talked about rekindling working the urban renewal investment for the rare person for Gold Beach Main Street, because that didn't work out with U of O. And so we came up with the business outreach and community coordinator position. So Gold Beach Main Street and Urban Renewal Agency have hired Ms. Dixon. She's going to be working with us at least through the end of June, and we're hoping that Ford Foundation will maybe pick up some more hours so we can keep her on. So take your weight, Lindsey.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you guys an update on anything that's going on. Actually, the application to forward is something that we've done recently. So I've only been in position, I guess, a few weeks now, but Jody and I worked on submitting the public charity application to forward to hopefully secure more funding for this position. And so that's what the first little graph is, is actually just a blank, at a glance sheet that I'll probably provide every time I fill something out, provide for you guys to look at. And then also current projects we're working on, the Art Flurry in Curry. So after they finish the mural project, we're kind of delving into the banner aspect right now, getting that figured out. And then also soon, more benches and memorial facilities will be ordered as soon as the places are finalized. And then more snowflakes will be ordered soon as well. And then future business, we're actually going to be hosting a 130-year celebration to commemorate the year our town changed the name from Ellensburg to Gold Beach. So not the year it started, but the year I changed its name, which is, we're only at 75, the year the, you know, the big documents were drawn up. But, so that's going to be kind of a continuation of the party and the four events that's been held in recent times. And so we're going to have Ferguson Brothers so far, Archrock Brewery, and The Wondering Befioli, and then we're going to be hopefully securing other vendors and nonprofits and stuff soon, and we really want to showcase some of the historical aspects of town. And then also soon, hopefully after we hear back and forward, we'll be having an action phase session to determine some of the next goals in the year. Yeah, that's what I know so far.
Just good to have you on board.
Thank you, and tell me to be back.
For those who don't know, Lindsey was a student liaison with us a few years ago, and it was always a pleasure to have her here, a pleasure to have her back, and thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I see a hand in the back. Yes, sir. All right, if you would just right over there and give us your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Gary Ecker. I'm representing the U.S. Census for 2020. And I'm not sure how to approach this, but all of our little communities on the coast, south coast here, need jobs, and these are temporary jobs that we're offering, and they're good for probably the next two months, maybe. They pay pretty well. You can basically make your own job. It pays $18 an hour. The census is asking that you would commit to 20 hours a week, minimum, but you can work weekends, days, nights, pretty much call your own shot. And I just think it's a really good opportunity for people that just need something temporarily to get them into summertime. It's a good time to be doing it. And I have some information, if I could leave something posted with the office?
Yeah, just leave it with our administrator.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, not only do you receive a salary, but you'll also receive gas allowance.
Right, time and mileage, just driving, it's $0.50 a mile, so it pays pretty well. I know around here, it's a lot of driving just to get from place to place.
It can add up. It definitely can. And also, no elected official can do that.
That's interesting.
Yeah. And they will not accept elected officials.
They don't want to skewing the numbers. It's pretty much a jurisdiction.
Yeah, right.
But at any rate, thank you, sir. If anybody's interested in that, well, yes, ma'am.
Will you be doing some of the training?
I won't be training. I'm just recruiting.
Just recruiting.
Yes. So where can I leave some information?
Yeah, we had problems 10 years ago with people leaving stuff at doors, there was nobody living there.
Right.
And it was like a big target, nobody lives here.
Yeah, I know. And that's really not allowed this year.
Good.
So can I leave?
That would be great.
Yeah, like I said, just leave it with, yes, leave it with the city administrator.
Okay.
She'd be happy to take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Like I said, generally speaking, when you fill these out, bring them up before the meeting begins, but that's okay. I know not everybody knows that. All right, sir, if you would please just give us your name for the record.
David Barnes. The comments you made earlier, sir, I had read about the planning commission opening that you have, and I would be interested in that, but I live in an incorporated county. But I am in the, your urban growth boundary area.
If I'm not mistaken, we can have one member anywhere.
We got that number.
Yeah, we can have one in the UGB, the urban growth boundary, and currently, one of our three positions is that position.
I understand.
But I would love for you to fill out an application, and then if we have, if that person vacates the spot, we could call you.
You know, another thing, if you were to consider it, that you might change your qualification so that you could have a minimum of three people live within the city, and the other two possibly. You know, so I don't know, I don't want to suggest you change your rules on things, just for me, but, you know, it would help you to find other people if you advertised that it's not just for within the city, but it's also within the urban growth boundary and we're accepting candidates, because there are a bunch of us who live up, you know, Jerry's flat before you get to the water plant.
Well, yeah, there are an awful lot of people that live outside the city limits itself that still call Gold Beach home and are affected by whatever Gold Beach does.
Exactly.
I understand your argument very well, but as it stands now, we have just one opening for outside city limits, and as the administrator said, it is filled. Yes, ma'am.
I thought we made an exception and set a precedent four years ago that any extreme measures, we can do two, because we had the current one, and then we had the guy that moved from town.
Tom DeWaterberg.
Oh, wait a second. I'm trying to remember that.
Yeah. I don't know if we went through our attorney, but.
We did. Now that you mentioned that.
We did make that exception, and we have been recruiting forever.
Yes.
And so it might be worth making an exception.
I will look that up, because now that you reminded me of it, and I want to say that we had to adopt an ordinance to allow for it.
We did.
So I will look that up.
Okay.
So we might have an opportunity, yes, sir.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Someone knows how to get in touch. Councilor Maxon knows how to get in touch.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you. We really appreciate you willing to step forward. Yes, sir.
Hope this is a perfect time for the, there was an article in the paper that was discussing the proposed ODOT road diet.
Just a second, sir.
Okay, can I say something before we start? It's not proposed. Okay, so if you're here to talk, it's not proposed. All it was, was an informational meeting at the last council meeting, so it's not, it's not in the works, it's not underway, so just, I just want the whole audience to know that, that ODOT made a presentation to the council last time. We are talking about it again this month, so great, they want to give input, but there's nothing in the works, okay? So just know that right now.
No, yes, sir.
My name is Grady Grant, and I'm resident of Gold Beach, and I'd just like to voice my support in doing that, to slow traffic down through town, and if it ends up looking anything like Port Over did, where they added, you know, took the four lanes down to one lane each way and a turn lane, if there would be any way to incorporate bike lanes, that would be great. I bike through town with my daughter, and it's terribly unsafe, as is. I guess more as recommendations for if it is happening, it would be great. There's ways that, you know, you could put the bike lane and then parking, and then, you know, and then have the street. So if there's at any point, and maybe this is the time to voice opinions on how that might look, or ways to make it safer for getting around town. You know, I know as a cyclist coming through town, like at the Panthers Den and at the McCade's Crossing, the pedestrian crosswalks have solid structures that kick you out, as a cyclist, they kick you out into the lanes of traffic. And so if that could possibly be addressed, I know, you know, I don't want to make things less safe for pedestrians, so even putting, you know, flashing beacons across those crosswalks and getting rid of that, I think it would just make it safer for people who do like to cycle around town.
All right, thank you, Senator Peter Campbell, appreciate it. All righty, is there any further, anything further from the audience? Okay, I want to thank you for addressing the council, taking the time. With that in mind, we move on. And we've got to the ordinance resolutions, resolution R1920-09, that's calling for the election regarding the fuel tax. This is something that we are re-looking at, all right? So with that, we've got, city administrator will give us the latest update on that.
Okay, so staff brought this issue up again last month, and I asked, I asked you all how you wanted to address it, if you wanted to do the street culvert fee, or if you wanted to try to for the gas tax again. When we did the outreach in 2018, overwhelmingly, the answer was gas tax. But when it actually got on the ballot, that was no. So the discussion last month was, A, do we want to put it back on the ballot? Yes, that was the answer. And B, do we want to do it for May or November? And the decision was for the May election. So in order to meet the May election timelines, we have to adopt something tonight, because it sets in motions other things that I need to get to the county in order for it to be on the ballot. So nothing changed from the prior one, the resolution is the same, just the number's different. And then the ordinance that was written by the attorney with your input is the same. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the administrator, Hilton? Yes, ma'am.
In rereading this, something hit me that hadn't hit me before, but it says imposing a tax on motor vehicle fuel dealers. It sounds like we're taxing the dealers, but they're actually just collecting it on our behalf.
Correct. And that question came up.
Can we word it differently?
If you read the text of it, it says that, but when I talked to the attorney, she said that's how the ballot title has to read.
No, it's probably unlost.
No, if you read the, what the measure information is on number B, exhibit B. Question, shall the city adopt an ordinance imposing a tax on motor vehicle fuel dealers to raise revenue? And then it has the summary of it. The tax will be imposed on dealers when they sell or distribute motor vehicle fuel within the city. Most commonly, this tax will be paid by gas stations for the sale of gasoline and diesel. So when the customer comes in, however many gallons get sold, it's, it's just like when we do the room tax, it's collected and remitted by the operators. It's not, the tax isn't imposed on each individual person that comes in.
Are we giving, and that's one of the things, when I was looking through this again, and forgive me if I missed it, and feel free to have me astray. To reimburse the gas station for the effort and the manpower that's going to be taken to collect that, what did we have in place for that? Because I didn't see it.
I believe it's 5%. It's like it is with the room tax, that for their trouble to collect and remit it, they get to keep 5% of the amount collected.
All right, thank you.
So Councilor Kaufman, if you have questions about the ballot title, because that's what you're going to be voting on tonight, so if you have questions about the ballot title, we can certainly have legal counsel on the phone next month, but.
But then we can't make it pay.
But then, yeah. But it can't be changed once you vote on it tonight. So if you have questions about the ballot title, it can't be changed after that.
All right, Councilor Maxon.
Well, we're getting more and more electric cars on the road, and it seems like they're left out of the ordinance. You don't know. That's something we want to ponder, if we have time to talk about that, but I think that.
We don't have any charging stations to begin with, but I know all.
We have one at Wild Springs in Grofford, and then we have one down at Sunset Pizza.
There's one at Sunset Pizza?
I apologize, Panthers Den.
But yes, you're right, the gas tax is not on electric vehicles.
Oh, council, anything further? Then we're prepared to make a motion.
I will make the motion.
Thanks, ma'am.
Resolution, make sure I'm in the right spot. We're at 1819-01.
If you look on page 12 of 77, it has the suggested motion that has all of this stuff in there.
Well, I'm not in the right spot, of course.
It's the front page of the Agenda Report.
Feel free to jump in if somebody finds it.
All right, I'll take her phone. I'll make a motion that the council adopt resolution R1920-09, a resolution calling for an election within the city referring to the voters on measure for the adoption of an ordinance imposing a tax on motor vehicle dealers providing for administrative enforcement and collection of tax, and adopting a ballot title and explanatory statement.
Thanks, ma'am. Was your second to that motion?
I'm the second to the motion.
Motion had been made.
You said, "But,"
Councilor Kaufman, second, and by Councilor Campbell. Discussion. Question.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, House, and Assembly.
And I will specifically get the answer to your question, because I understand what you're asking, but it's imposed on the people that are selling the gas.
Yeah, if anybody does a campaign, that would be something to.
That we need to have an easily understood answer, yes, so.
All right. Miscellaneous items, review, discuss, draft, code amendments for short termification levels.
Councilor Kaufman, do you want to address this, or do you want me to start?
I can, I'm just not there yet.
Okay.
There's a lot of pages in here. One of the, well, we talked about limiting the number of vacation rentals in residential zones, and right now, I believe most of the vacation rentals are in the commercial zones. They may be a house, but it's in the commercial zone, and not limiting those. Also, the facts are that the vacation rentals are nowhere near full occupancy, so there's not losing, we're not losing anything by restricting, because there's actually probably more than are getting there. And I believe my suggestion was 10 in the residential area, and the proposal the attorney wrote was 10 for each zone, which I think is too many. I don't know how to word that, where we would do that. 10 in 1R, 2R, or 3R, respectively, total, not each.
Have you got a question, Councilor? Looking through this, it appeared that the majority of them, I think something like 14, I'm not too sure, I didn't remember the number, but they're all located in one area. So we have, and yet, it looks as if they are in indifferent zones. What's going on with that?
Well, spacious shores were a lot, a lot of, almost half of our vacation rentals, registered vacation rentals.
Right.
That is a commercial zone, so it's.
But now, a commercial zone, so according to this, we are limiting the cap at different areas, R1, R2, and R3.
No, that was just a suggestion that.
No, no, I know it's a suggestion, but that's what we're talking about. So we're not talking about anything in commercial.
I think the idea.
So that we would add, say like, possible 30 here, and then whatever commercial has to bear within the city?
Well, I think that's what Councilor Kaufman was saying, that she meant 10, just 10, in the residential zone, not 10 for each residential zone.
That I can understand, but what I'm trying to get at is what is written here.
Right, and that's the discussion, yeah. So I think the intent that Councilor Kaufman had was to cap it at 10 in residential zones, period, not 10 for each. And that, I just sent the attorney what we had discussed, so he just took what we had said. So we could say that, I mean, we could take the language out about 10 permits in the 1R, and just say that in all zones, zone residential, and it'll be up to staff to keep track of who's in what zone.
Yeah, that makes a lot more sense, at least to me. Councilor Brennan?
Yeah, because I, when I read that, it looked like there were going to be 40 permits.
Right.
So are we gonna, I mean, is your proposal to do 10 permits in residential and 10 in commercial, or what about the commercial?
Commercial's an outright use, right now. We'd have to change the commercial zone to limit.
Okay, so judge.
But if you can put a motel there, why couldn't you put a vacation?
Yeah, so 10 only in residential.
So I'm thinking 10 just in residential, that'll limit it going into the main part of the city.
The rental pool.
And keep it in the commercial zones.
10 total, right.
That's what I'm thinking, 10 total. And actually, we have R2 and R, I think some R1, and I think we have an R3. We still have some counties only in the city. So we need to include that in this. Hopefully, that'll change in our next update, but.
Yeah, the meeting with DLCD is to talk about the code changes that the housing study had suggested, so that's the beginning of that. So hopefully in the next, I'm hoping by summertime, we'll have some draft language to bring to you that we can update the residential zones for the recommendations that were in the housing study.
When are you meeting with them?
We were supposed to meet tomorrow, but the gal from DLCD had something come up, and so now we're shooting for, I want to say the 10th of March was the last discussion.
Can I be invited?
Just bear in mind that you will be the one, the council is the one that does the legislative portion of it. I mean, just bear that in mind.
All right, back to this.
All right. Any further?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I like the idea of the 10 limit cap.
For residential?
Yeah, for all of the-
Commercial, we would have to change that.
The one thing from a staff standpoint, the number F that they suggested about the 12 consecutive months the dwelling fails to report and submit room tax, we don't actually let them go that far. If you don't remit within 30 days, I'm getting in touch with you. So I don't think that we should offer, I don't think we should offer that. Like, you could say, if it's inactive, you know, because there's times that a vacation rental will have like a long-term rental for a while, and then they want to switch back to the vacation rental. Currently, the conditional use permit, it goes with the property. So if there's conditional use permit that's been issued, as an example, I had one from several years ago, the property's being sold, it hasn't been used for a while, but there is a permit there that the person can use. So I think what the attorney was trying to get at here was, maybe if it's not being used as a vacation rental for that amount of time, then they need to reapply. And I think that would be a good idea, that, you know, that way it keeps it from flip-flopping between a regular rental and a short-term rental. But that's just staff's two cents.
Any further? Yes, ma'am?
So in process, the current conditional use permits would be notified that after X number of months, you're inactive, and you lose your permit, you have to reapply. Is that what you're thinking?
I would need to verify that with the attorney, because I don't know that we can impose that restriction on people that, it's sort of like you can't make things retroactive, but it could be that you can make it where after a certain amount of time, then that goes into effect. But I don't know that you can do it easily.
The thing is, if I own property and I buy 10, only 10 available, and then I don't use them, then nobody else can have them.
Correct.
So that, that's kind of unfair to you.
Correct.
So how do you balance that, is my question.
Yeah, so how many are there now in the residential? All three, you know?
Yes, I put a chart in there, and I can tell you real quickly.
I'm just wondering, what are we going to do about those that are in yours right now? Right, that's what we get, if we say 10, there's quite a few more to write, so how are you going to, I mean, what's going to happen with those permits?
That's what Counselor Kaufman was kind of asking out loud, and that would be something I would need to ask the attorney.
Okay.
Would it be possible to just allow a certain amount of them to last?
I just, I don't know that if we can make, if somebody has a valid permit now, I don't know that if our law changes, if we can make that retroactive on that person.
No, but maybe, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't put that down well, but what I'm saying is, is that as perhaps they go off the market, not to allow anything more on until we get down to the desired number.
Correct. Right now, there's the currently registered, and we keep on top of them pretty good. About every quarter, I go online and see who's advertising vacation rentals, so we try to stay on top of it. Right now, 11 of them are in residential zones.
Okay, so we'll leave one of both?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
I would say that would be a question for the attorney, is, and he's suggesting 12 months of inactivity, and then they lose-
Well, I don't like the way that's worded, where it says not remitting. Yeah, no, I'm going to get ahold of you if you haven't remitted the tax, but inactivity.
Right. But we do have people that if you don't remind them, they won't do it, and they lie and say they don't have them, and those kinds of things.
Yeah.
This would make people be honest, because if they're not reporting, they're going to be caught. And the second part is, could we limit, if they're not bringing in so much revenue, that, sorry, you're not a good enough vacation rental, you're out. You don't have like-
Like an income threshold, or like occupancy?
If you're not at least a 30% occupancy year round, and everybody else is at 60, you're obviously not doing a good job, so we'll do it to somebody else. And I don't know what those numbers should be. It's just a five.
I think you start running into trampling a little bit on people's rights at that time. Yes, ma'am?
So as it's, as we have it now, it would be 12 months inactivity?
No, that's just a suggestion. The red is the suggestions, because Counselor Kaufman had made some draft language, and he tried to incorporate what some of her, some of her ideas were. Right now, there isn't, you know, there isn't anything that says that you, if you don't pay the tax, then you get penalized. But there isn't anything that has to do with inactivity, like your permit goes away if you're inactive.
Yeah, because I know that many vacation rentals around here will use remote workers to keep a vacation rental occupied in the out season, so that they have housing and generate revenue. So I hope that doesn't take them off the list.
Not unless you guys pass this, but I would say that item F, I don't really like the way that's worded right now anyway, so. But that would be up to you guys, if you want to add a, either an occupancy standard or a monthly standard, if you're inactive for X amount of time, or your occupancy doesn't reach this on an annual level. I want to say, and I'll have to look back, not now, but I will for the next meeting, I want to say the Lincoln City Code had something about that, that it had to maintain a certain occupancy level, or it needed to be a long-term rental. Because that's the idea that we're trying to get at here, is allowing more long-term rentals for the community. And I want to say they had something in there about that, that if it didn't maintain a certain occupancy levels at short-term, then it needed to be open for month-to-month rentals.
Yes, ma'am?
The other thing to think about is, some people are just using it for tax shelter, so they get that, so they can just vacation there, and they never really want to rent a battle. But because they have this vacation rental thing, and they rent it three times a year, they can get that shelter. What we want is long-term rentals, or good vacation rentals, ones that will be good to the residents, to the guests, so they feel like they came to a good place. And that's why originally we talked about standards, but we don't really have any way to implement that. The county might be able to do that, because they've got code enforcement officers now. That could be something that they take on, is that standard, we get it up, that standard, where all your plugs have to work, and you have to have functioning water, and you've got a well that's got to be tested, that kind of stuff, so that people have a safe And I had put in here originally like a 3,500 square foot doesn't count towards the 10. And I think if we do decide to go with that, it needs to be clear that they're using that 3,500 square feet. It can't be the cottage is all they're renting, and they keep the big house for themselves. Does that make sense?
I'm not following your house.
So like, if I had two houses, and one is giant, and one's small, and I ran out the little ones as vacation rental, so now I'm not part of that cap, but I keep the big house for myself. So it kind of takes away that ability, they have to use a whole 3,500 square feet for it. And he also asked about couch surfing, and we don't care about that, and I don't think we care if somebody's just renting out a bedroom as a vacation rental, because that's like the B&amp;B part, and that doesn't take away from the rental. It's not very many people have the courage to run out the bedroom.
You know, we've had a couple people ask about B&amp;Bs, but then when they, because we do have specific regulations for those, but when they kind of see everything that's involved in it, they're like, maybe, I guess I don't want to do that after all.
Yeah. And then my last comment is, you're going to see last long-term rentals and vacation rentals because of the Senate Bill 608, the long-term rental cannot be forced to leave. So you have a three-month or six-month lease, you used to be able to say you're out at the end of that lease, you can't do that anymore. You must renew it for the same term, unless they do something wrong. So that means you have guests coming June 1, and I'm not going to leave on May 31, because, hey, I can live where you want. There's nothing the landlord can do about it. So you're going to see less and less people taking that option, because they can't force them to move.
Yes, ma'am?
I think it's going to force people to create more vacation rentals just outside of some semblance.
Could be.
I'm hoping the county's going to merit, and a few cities are going to merit, to their own specific unions. That's the only way we're going to solve the housing problem, and not what happened in the North County, North State.
I know that a lot of, you know, of course, we see at the counter when people come in to change the water accounts when the property sells, and we usually just, you know, ask them general questions, like, you know, are you moving here, or, you know, just making conversation. And for the, I would say for the last year, most of the houses, the turnover is their second homes, so people are not moving here right now. I mean, they want to retire here eventually, but they're not right now. So that's kind of interesting. That's how it used to be before the crash, and then we didn't have so much turnover. But now it's kind of getting back to that, where people that are in other states, Arizona and California, that are getting ready to retire, like in the next 10 years, are buying property up here now, but not ready to retire for maybe another 10 years, so. And we have, we are getting a lot more inquiries about those people wanting to do vacation rentals, instead of just a rental.
It's easier, I know.
Yeah. Well, and it's just the infrastructure, like with the CASA and Airbnb and all that, it's easier to do it that way than to have like a property manager and rent your house out month-to-month, so.
So as of right now, does this really want to impact the TLT funds that we've collected?
Not significantly. Like right now, most of our vacation rentals, the, I would say two-thirds of them are already in the commercial zone anyway, so we're collecting revenue on them. The 11 that I just counted quickly, just looking at the names real quick, they do not rent as often as the ones in the commercial zones. And the reason for that partly is, most of the ones that are in the commercial zones are on the west side of the highway. They have the in-ocean view or access, where the residential ones tend to be on the east side of the highway or out in Hunter Creek. So people that are coming here to do a vacation rental typically want to stay on the beach. So just, and I'm not saying that that's how it always is, but I just, from eyeballing this quickly, the residential ones don't rent near as often as the commercial zone ones do. It's just, I'll have to look at the occupancy difference, but it's, it is, there is a difference.
Has the county started getting their data in yet?
Yeah.
So are they tracking the vacation rentals separately?
Yes.
That's good, good. You'll be able to see how that's going over there as well, and we're finding it's way below the motels.
Occupancy.
Occupancy. And Jody has those reports with her thing every month that I kind of analyze them. They don't do nearly as well as the motels do. And we want our motels to be, they have a lot of infrastructure. The houses can be ready to anybody. I think.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Any other way you're going to treat this?
Does the administrator have instructions?
Yeah, so I will talk to, Ross is actually helping us on this one also, so I'll talk to Ross about some of the questions that you have, and see if we can come up with another version. And do you want to see this next month?
Next month.
Okay.
All right. Monthly update of city strategic planning.
Okay, and I did not, I'm sorry, I was working on, I was going to work on that today, and then I was doing the executive session stuff, and I didn't get to it. So I will get you those this week, and then we can talk about them in March.
All right, thank you. All right. Update on ODOT Highway 101 reconfiguration discussion, and I'll start this off a little bit. I got an email today from Nancy Sue Rose, and Bless Her Heart, she went ahead and compiled some thoughts and what have you, that she was able to obtain from the people in Fort Orford concerning how they are coping and dealing with their three-lane, in short, it is three-lane, two with one turn lane. At any rate, it was interesting, she said that most, and I think if I'm not mistaken, because she was going to go ahead and give a copy of that small report to you, you know, to bring it to the city hall.
Somebody dropped something off today, yes.
Okay.
I did not speak to them, but yes, something was dropped off.
And it is interesting, and that Fort Orford, for the most part, is happy with it, whether they're not happy with, of course, it's still being in the trial period, how the road looks, you know, they aren't happy with that too much. But most people are relatively happy with that. On the other hand, we do have certain things here that make it, would make it a little bit more difficult to do, but one of the things she brought up is something that I should have thought of myself, because it's happened to me more than once, and another reason, Sarge, I jaywalk. And that is, going across, using a crosswalk, I don't know if any of the rest of you have ever encountered this, and I hope you haven't, but you'll have one-lane stop, and so you're starting out there, and I don't know, more than once, a person doesn't see that person, that one car stop, or they do see it and figure the person's going to make a turn or one thing or another, and they don't have to stop, and they go shooting right on through. And I've been within a few feet of being clobbered by one of those things more than once. And this is something that she brought up, that she has seen quite a bit of, and that is a huge safety problem. That's a, to me, the first thing we always look at is the safety of the citizens, it's just, you've got to look at that first. But at any rate, I wanted to bring that up, I wanted to thank Nancy Sue for that information, and, you know, bless her heart, it's nice of her to do that. So with that in mind, and having got my little spiel out, it's now in your ballpark right now. Ms. Star?
Well, I don't really have anything to add, other than what was in the report. I didn't, that was more of an informational thing. Will and I are meeting with Darren tomorrow to talk about that and some other highway things, you know, not related to the road diet, just 101 concerns. And then I did have a phone call with Darren and his colleagues after the last council meeting to talk about some of the concerns that I had mentioned at the last council meeting, which is in the packet. And Jenna, the gal that did the bike pedestrian stuff, she gave me the contact information for other cities that have done this recently, for us to contact and see if they've had any issues since they have done this. So that's just where we're at, we're just collecting data, and that data, as I get it, I will provide it to you.
All right, thanks again. With that in discussion, anything, any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Can anybody read this crash type chart?
Okay, part of the reason-
That's interesting.
Part of the reason why I kind of just summarized the dates and how much it was, and it is 11 by 17, which you guys only get to see the 80 by 1, but I did, I'm going to freely admit publicly that I had a hard time with this. So, but I did, I kept staring at it, and it did eventually start making more sense. I did have some questions that I wanted to ask Darren tomorrow, but I think this is, and Darren, I'm going to put you on the spot, I'm assuming that this is a report that you guys use internally?
It is.
Yeah, because there's some of the-
Our engineer uses it, of course.
Okay, that says all I need to know right there.
Yeah.
Yep. So I was able to noodle things out after I had read through it several different times, but they have specific codes and stuff that I think are specific to them. That's why I tried to put, I think for our purposes, the most important thing is, where was the accident, what year was it, and what types of accidents are we seeing? So I figured all the rest of that stuff, if you guys want to be data nerds and look at it, go for it, but I don't know that we needed, we don't necessarily need to get down in the engineering weeds, I think we're on.
All right, thank you. Now, real quickly, you know, I'm glad that you brought that up, because it jogged my memory, because I'd- Thank you. Now, real quickly, you know, I'm glad that you brought that up because it jogged my memory because I'd made notes on this as well, too. And it seems as if the preponderance of the accidents are either rear ending or turning maneuvers.
Yep.
Now, that's what got me to thinking is, and this is with four lanes, correct?
Yep.
Cause these are ours. All right. How would rear ending and turning maneuvers be affected if we went down to actually two with, with that center lane?
Certainly it should go down because it's a turn lane, whereas now we don't have turn lanes, so harder in accidents. Over the turn lanes theoretically, yes, I would think they would go down.
That's why I wanted to talk to some of these other communities that have done this to find out, you know, like, okay, real world, how is this working for you? So.
I, yes, yes, ma'am.
Counselor, go ahead.
Do you remember what year we put the, they put the flashing lights on Third Street? And it was that.
It was right after Ellen left. So.
It was 2011.
She left in 20, at the end of 2011, because that was one of the first things.
We did it that early? Cause we had to pay for that.
Yes, we did.
That was later than that, that they put them in.
It was after she left. So I want to say, cause she left at the end of 2011. So I want to, I want to say 2012-ish because it was right after, right after I changed jobs. I want to say it was within that year.
So a good number of the Third Street accidents were after that was put in? So I don't think it really solved the problem.
I think it helps pedestrians, the accidents, most of the accidents were, like what I could read on, you know, like, was there a pedestrian involved? It doesn't look like a lot of the accidents. It was mostly vehicle on vehicle, but I think the lights have helped for people trying to get to and from the caves for sure.
Yeah, that, that Third Street thing, you're right. That's a best. Go ahead, Counselor.
What I was, what I wanted to just bring up for discussion is would it be beneficial to keep the dialogue open? To maybe form a small committee with one or two counselors, representatives from Main Street, that would be able to take city concerns to ODOT, citizen concerns, just so you're not the only receptacle of all this kind of way. And maybe that committee could be a liaison between the city and ODOT and address concerns that people bring up. Cause I think the more we talk about this, the more info we're beginning. I'd be willing to do something.
Kind of like a town hall or something?
No, just a, a committee that would address all these issues, you know, rather than just putting on a seat.
Well, it would, it, it would be good if, because ultimately, ultimately it's not my decision or Will's decision or the fire chief or the police chief. Ultimately, it's not staff's decision. Ultimately, it's going to be your decision to talk to ODOT and ask them. The ultimate decision is going to be with ODOT. It's their road. It's not our road. So, and it's not our road. So it would be kind of nice for, for folks that want to give input, yeah, if there was a repository for that. But I would prefer that, than that committee talks with us.
Oh, absolutely.
With Will and I, and then we can talk to ODOT because I think they're used to dealing on the staff level. But yeah, I mean, if you guys would be interested in doing something like that. Cause I, yes, thank you. I, I don't really have the time to address everyone's concerns about, you know, yay, it's a good idea. No, it's not a good idea. Yay, it's a good idea. No, it's, I'm sorry, I don't.
I know. Yeah.
So that would be great. Yeah.
Well, I mean, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Well, I think in all fairness, if we're going to do that, we should look at alternatives to the road diet. Some other traffic calming measures that maybe we could implement. I think there's some opportunity to reroute some of that McQ's traffic through some other property possibly. Relocate that mail drop box that they have in the parking lot there. And if we're going to have that discussion about 101, I think at some point, if, if we did move forward with some kind of project plan that we don't leave out the discussion of the power line relocation.
One thing, and administrator brought this up, and I hope everybody remembers this. We don't own that road. They can do whatever they want to to that road. They've done it to us in the past when we wanted a crosswalk out there. They said, no, you can't have one. And so we had to tear up our crosswalk. So what they are doing in essence is they're trying to be a good neighbor. But ultimately, the decision is theirs. We can suggest, but we can't demand. And that's in essence, what we're trying to do is get the best possible deal that we can get with their blessings. Everybody understands that. All right. So as far as getting underground wiring and everything like that, I, I don't know that that would be in the mix, Counselor, but. I just, like I said, thankfully, ODOT wants to work with us and not unilaterally. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So they are coming in and reworking the road to some extent by 2024. And so we've been kind of lighting this project out and looking at the timeframe for that. My suggestion is there has been inquiry not only about road diet, but the relocation of the power lines or at least moving them somewhere, at least addressing it. If we were able to partner those programs like I've suggested before, it ends up being less expensive. And so if we want to do due diligence to the requests of the citizens, it's my recommendation that we consider that as well.
It's a distinct possibility. Yeah, there's no problem with that. And certainly we have the, the time. This is not a pressing obligation on our, on our behalf. We're basically right now just doing discussion and trying to brainstorm and come up with something that might be beneficial to us. Yes, ma'am.
I thought we got a quote through our engineer of what that would cost.
A lot, right.
As astronomical.
It is.
Is that true or am I remembering wrong?
The feasibility study, I, I was just speaking to Mr. Speaker not too long ago about it. Just the feasibility study, he estimated was going to be about $75,000. Just the feasibility study. That's not, that's not moving anything. That's not digging anything. That's.
It's not doing anything.
And then we were talking about a million dollars a block or something like that, right?
There, at one time, back in the early 2000s, when I looked into it, I was quoted at that time, a million dollars a block. Since that time, and of course, there's no way we could have done that. Since that time, I've also checked and, and, well, not actually, yes, I did check with Kokeel. They did, I think, three blocks underground. And that cost them, if I'm not mistaken, right around $3 million, just for those three blocks. What we're looking at, of course, is about a two mile, well, actually at least a good mile of, of power lines going back and forth. It is regardless of how we look at this and what we do with it, it is exceptionally expensive to be able to do it. I would love to see it myself, get those things out underground. They'd probably be safer, particularly in a, in a time of a natural disaster or what have you. But nevertheless, we come right up face to face with that good old hard rock that's called mine. But it's certainly worth looking into.
I would say.
I don't mean to discourage you on that. That was not my intention.
So Councilor Brennan and Councilor Madison, were you guys interested in this subcommittee?
I am. If anybody else is, that's fine.
Sure. And I'll, I'll talk to Ms. Dixon because I know that they have a list of people that were interested in certain things. And we can pair you, pair you up with those interested folks in that group. Okay. So you want to bless them with having us that committee, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. You are now blessed. And thank you. You are now a subcommittee. That was pretty easy, quite frankly. All right.
That's why you have the gavel.
You betcha.
I didn't see one, honestly.
No, but I do appreciate you taking that off. That's great. At any rate, are we through hashing this out?
For today, yeah.
Yeah, for today. That's good. So what we've got, and I'm going to, just before the city administrator, administrator report, which is next. The city is celebrating its 75th anniversary. It was April 24th, 1945 that the city of Gold Beach was incorporated as a city. Of course, it existed quite some time before, but it was at that time that it actually became a city in the state of Oregon. So we have a bunch of pins. And as a side note, the city is, and I like to mention this at times, even though it dates me pretty badly. The city is exactly four days older than I am. I know there, I knew I would get some chuckles, but nevertheless, it's not my fault the year I was born. Anyway, what I wanted to do is the city administrator, bless her heart, she took the liberty and what have you of getting some, a little commemorative pins. And I've got a few here that I'm going to be passing out and I was wondering, they're, they're really quite nice. I've got one on my jacket now. It's the Gold Beach 75th anniversary is right there. Would any of you like one of these?
We have a lot of them, so please.
Well, by golly, I'm going to go ahead and, yeah, come on up. And by golly, let's go ahead and get these things out. All right. We're going to, you're welcome. All right. You're welcome. You got two. You got, you got it. All righty. Oh, even he gets one. All right. He paid to come tonight, right? Okay. With that, we'll get back down to business and city administrator. Yes, ma'am?
I think we needed to make a motion from the executive sessions.
Yes.
You're absolutely correct. Thank you very much for reminding us.
Would you like me to take a stab at it?
Yes, ma'am. That would be great if you would.
So no names, no numbers, no adverts.
Right. Could be interesting. And you can do it.
Okay. We had an executive session prior to this meeting. And I make a motion that the city attorney negotiate with the other parties regarding the property. Are you getting it all? To resolve the problem? Is that too vague?
Are you in question?
Can we, can we put the negotiating dollar amount?
I have to.
We can put the amount.
I think we can, yes.
Are you sure? Cause then that tells them what they're.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Okay. Okay. So have the city attorney work with the other party to resolve the issue that we discussed in.
Negotiate is the word.
Negotiate.
All right. I think that sums it up pretty good, doesn't it? All right. Thank you, Counselor Kaufman. Is there a second to that? Counselor Brennan, seconds. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. And I will update you next month on what the status is.
Thank you, ma'am. And Counselor Kaufman, thank you for the, for reminding me of that. Administrator, which you got cooking?
Okay. So each have a copy of the, the report and the reporter pilot. I'll give you guys copies of it so you don't have to make super notes. Okay. I'll send you an email of it. Okay. So Public Works, the pre-bidding on our water infrastructure project is just going great guns. Will's been working with Dyer. They've been potrolling and verifying locations of where current surfaces are, the mains are. Dyer's been working on preparing the bidding documents. Will said that we're at 30%, which that's pretty good. They, they build the documents and then they get reviewed by us to make sure everything's in there. So we're hoping to be able to go out to bid in May. And initially we were going to try to do one contract, but it looks like we're going to do two now. We're going to do the water main project and then we're going to have to work at the water treatment and water intake. So it'll be two different contracts. The prefab bridge crossing at the park, the crew has been working on installing that. They were pouring concrete today. There's a picture of the bridge and it's kind of cool. This is a bridge that the engineers had recommended to us. It's actually like docks, like, like that for ports, but they work really well for small bridge crossings. So, and then that way we don't have to do, they have the engineering already, but that way we don't have to pay to have it re-engineered. So it's kind of cool. The police department, I neglected to report this awesome project that happened in December. And so I included a photograph. Corporal Warren had come up with this idea earlier in the year to work with the school to do kind of a Santa delivery project where we had presents here that were delivered by the police department and the fire department and also Santa. So that was really cool. So we have a picture of all the folks that participated in it. We had four of our volunteer firefighters and then Santa and we had the Grinch. I'm not sure who the Grinch was. But I did hear that he was taken into custody for being that. Fire department, you guys know that Chief Krieger is awesome on training stuff. Him and the safety officer Brett Wyder Miller, who is also in his day job, works for Police Force Control. He's the assistant unit forester. They did in three weekends in January, did trainings with the various volunteer fire departments from Langley's down to Harbor and got 31 volunteer firefighters certified with this one particular certification. So that's pretty cool. So that helps not, not just their departments, but also us when we need to call on them in mutual aid. So as soon as the weather gets a little bit better, Chief Krieger wants to give you guys a tour of the two new vehicles. But there's some photographs there so that you can see what the, the new type three looks like. And we, they got the, whatever it's called, wrap done on the vehicle. So it's pretty cool now. Visitor Center, the tax and statistical reports through December are attached there. There's some little information for you to read later about totals for the year and why we think we're, where we're at. The big news is it's glass float season now. It started on Saturday. Exciting stuff. The visitor center said that on day one, which was Saturday in February, we had 185 visitors. That's really awesome. That's like close to summer numbers. One of the things this year that's new that is, I think totally awesome, is a local artist named Todd had taken some of the, the glass floats, I want to say it's the five inch floats and done, took 12 of them for each of the 12 weeks of the event and hand painted a specific marine thing on it. And they are so awesome. He, the ones that I saw, I saw the, the seal one the other day, but there was an otter one and an eagle one. But they're, they're like super nice. The, one of the floats per week has a special tag on it that says, you have won the hand painted float. And so then they get that float for the week. So they also, we also have a drawing for a weekend stay here in Gold Beach and jet boat trip, but that's another free thing. But the pictures of these floats are just awesome. Okay. So new pictures, I contracted last year with local photographer Tammy Ross to update our library on our tourism photos. update our library on our tourism photos. The photos that we have, we've had for a long time, which, I mean, they're good, but they, we just need some new photos. So she's gonna spend about the next year, we started in October, so she's gonna spend most of 2020 updating our library of photographs. She just delivered today her first, her first group of them, and there was a sample of one of them. She did the glass floats, and I just thought that was such a beautiful picture, and the copier doesn't do it, doesn't do it justice. Show season, as I said before the council meeting, three sports shows. Anthony will be doing two of them. He just did one this weekend. I will be doing the Rosework show. That one is next weekend. We have the San Francisco show, and then we're doing a new one in Vancouver, B.C. this year. And that was the one that I talked about, that it's actually the weekend of what would have been our March council meeting. So the March council meeting media is going to actually be on the second Monday, it's gonna be on the ninth for March, because I'm gonna be gone. But most of our Canadian visitors come from Vancouver, so we've been looking to try to do a show up there for several years, so I'm hoping that this will be a good show for us, and we can, if it's a good show for us, we can hopefully do it year after year, but we'll see. And then finally, because as Mr. Mayor said, this is our 75th anniversary, we, me and the marketing consultant, Bob Carson, we redid our visitor center logo for 2020 to kind of do a retro 1940s feel, and so that is what our new, the new logo for this year will be, for kind of a retro 1945. And that's all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Well, Counsel Madison, do you have anything that you would like to bring to us?
You'll cover housing and you'll cover the events center? Yes, okay. No?
No. Yes. Unusual. You showed me the list.
Welcome.
All right.
That's called delegation.
Counsel Brennan?
I don't have anything.
I was kind of counting on that.
I wanted to give a quick update on the events center on the beach and some fun things that's been going on there. They recently did elections, have elected a new president and vice president to their board. They have also chosen the theme of our county fair. They did something different this year, which is they went out to the citizens and asked the citizens to make suggestions and do the artwork as well. So they have decided that our theme for our fair this year is gonna be surfers, sand, and everything land. And that was come up with by a group, Gold Archery Shoots, which is the bow and arrow club run by Becky Schaefer. The other thing I wanted to touch on is, we are finally, thank you, on the last stage of the roofing process for Doshasuite. That project has gone up to bid by Dyer, which our city went and contracted Dyer to facilitate the bidding process. So we're at the very last step. It is out at bid. Once those bids come in, then the events center on the beach, their board of directors will determine who's gonna receive that bid, and it is scheduled for completion in August. So things are moving forward.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Good news. Counsel Kaufman?
I feel like I'm on the spot. I wonder what you wanted me to say about housing? There are some changes with the housing task force, but it's been moving along. Is that what you wanted me to say?
Yep.
Okay. I'm actually gonna step back in the core team and come to the other meetings when needed, and summer's gonna keep carrying the torch for the city. But I promised to work on some projects with the city, we can get our hot plan updated, and we have all that language, and I think you're already working on that. And then the, what's called that thing? I forgot my notes. Anyway, the easy button for when somebody wants to develop a little roadmap of how, who to do it, who's gonna talk to, and will there be a main contact at the city that can say, "You know what? Let me run you over an area to somebody," so that we're not losing that interested person to another community. There's a word for that, I can't remember what it's called. Then one of the things was, or vacation, I don't think, sure, yeah. So once we get done with that, we've got a couple other projects we can work on. But we're ahead of everybody else, so we're always. And then I noticed we didn't get our income yet from the water and fire contract, is that coming soon, this year?
They pay twice. They pay in January and they pay in, in July, which it's, whenever the second or third. And usually I have to remind them, but you usually get the first payment in January.
So we should get it in February?
Pardon?
We should get it in February, then?
I hope, yeah.
Do we have a file fee? Maybe you could put that in the next contract. That's a lot of cash flow.
Yeah.
And we basically provided service for six months before they paid anything.
Yeah.
And we provided another six months before they paid the next payment. And I know, I think they're all volunteers.
They are.
So, yeah, probably forget. And I'm still concerned that expenses are up and revenue is down, so hopefully you'll have a report for shortly on how we're gonna handle that. General fund, primarily. And that was it for me.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Counsel. I don't have anything really to add. Been sitter and yawn and a lot of different little meetings and what have you concerning Chednov death, work of the coastal trail, which is making good headway, moving along pretty good, and we will be having another meeting, and I'm not too sure exactly when. They haven't really decided upon the time and the date, but it's not gonna be too much further in the future. I also wanted to welcome Commissioner Court Voice. I saw him come in there, and it's always good to have you here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for being here. So with that in mind, I am now going to open it up again. If a citizen has a comment, if there is something that they would like to say, make sure if there's something that you would like to say. Then you have about three minutes, tops. Okay? And we'd be willing to, and only too happy to hear from you. We generally try to give it, give citizens an opportunity to comment at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. Obviously, the beginning, so that they can state what they'd like to get. The end of the meeting is sometimes nothing more than just saying what you thought of the meeting, or how we did things, or one thing or another. But the point is, is you've got this time. So if anyone has anything that they would like to say, now is your time, but forever hold your peace. Yeah, Patrick, come on up. Just give it a name and...
Thank you, Larry. Point now, Patrick MacArthur, last meeting, I addressed the council on the issue of the Coast Guard life and the noise it's producing. I was told a gentleman in front of Counsel Kaufman wasn't in charge of this operation, and the letters I submitted to the senators and commissioners have been distributed amongst the council. And I'm just looking for a little feedback and see if there's been any progress on this issue, or is there anything else I can do to expedite the procedure.
Okay, and the city administrator would be the one to direct that, to review, or right here. Could you, Counsel Kaufman?
Yeah, I did forward your letters on, and I thought maybe I would get a response, and I have not. To be honest with you, I don't understand. It's above my, you did a good job of researching it. It's not something I understand. So I did forward them on, I did not get a response. I was actually gonna ask the mayor if he'd be willing to call, at least to Defazio's office, and see if we even have a contact there.
Is there?
Defazio?
Yeah.
Representative Defazio? And see if somebody in his office, I can forward it directly, because their general is not...
Yeah, yeah, I just...
It's not likely enough to respond.
No, no, ma'am. What I'm saying is, is that I just give me the, whatever Mr. MacArthur has given you and what have you, and then I can go ahead and then make the phone call. I just wanna make sure what we're gonna do once the phone call is being made.
We basically want them to read it and respond to Mr. MacArthur. It's not unsayable, there's nothing we can really do about it, except get their attention.
No, I know that. So that's, in essence, the only thing that we are doing, is to go ahead and make sure that we get a response. That's it, in essence, right? At least something, something that we can relate back to you.
Something we can negotiate with, because they are in violation of the city ordinances, the unenumerated nuisances and noise ordinances in Chapter 5. So they are in violation of the city's ordinances, and they're violation of technical, and not due to the Coast Guard reputation, if you're, well, with the Coast Guard, I'm just trying to get some amicable resolution to this maddening situation. It's not very good for development. If I were an investor, and I went down there to the poor area to do some investment, and this thing going on constantly, my first thought would be, I'm not gonna build rental housing here and sell it to somebody if this, if they have to listen to this thing. So that's, that's the primary thing for redevelopment. That's how it affects the whole city, is the fact that it's gonna squelch development down there, because it's a terrific nuisance. I know that everybody in this whole city doesn't have, doesn't get it all the time, but because of geography and topography, and the fact that it goes off 2,880 times per day, it's, it's, it's... I tell you, I live across the street from the mayor. I bought my house in October 2019. If I had ever heard that sound before, I would have never bought this. Are we going somewhere else? But I'm taking my amount of money out there and going to another community where I could have a little peace and quiet at night. So I'm sure that I'm not the only person who feels that way. And we're trying to invest, get real estate investors and real estate investment in this Easily ameliorated nuisances like noise ordinances should, should not be that big of a deal. I know it's the Coast Guard, I know how difficult it is to get them to change anything that they do. And that's why I'm here, because the city council has some weight to their questions, their respect, and they're trying to work with you, it's in their mandate, it's in their mandala, they must. It's not, it's really not optional to them. It says right there in the introductory, brought from the Department of Defense technical management, that they must conform to the ordinances. So just a little bump in the city council, the only need to modify, just, all of it's the same respect for Gold Beach that they have for Brooklyn. Brookings, they've got that thing mounted on a little concrete platform, it only goes off when it's required, and it's, and they're spending $75,000 or $80,000 all of the year according to the Department of Defense, just mounting, just taking it flying, everything back and forth across Brooklyn. So it's, it's in their best economic interest, it's in their best interest of their personal, of the public relations with the coast. Motor safety will still be enhanced as much as it always has been, and they won't be, they won't be driving investment out of this town.
All right.
So that's my, thank you for your time, Counsel.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Counsel Kaufman, if you would, just leave whatever information that you have with the administrator, and I will be in and pick it up with her, if that's okay.
You got it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right. We normally would have had our meeting, generally speaking, we have changed them to the first Monday as opposed to the second Monday a matter of a few months ago. Next month, however, we're reverting back to the second Monday because of commitments that were made prior to the change of the schedule. And one of, of course, the chief one being, well, or a couple of them, we have a vacation that was scheduled for that time prior to the change. We don't wanna see our counselor miss out. And we have our city administrator, who has, who will be involved in a, in a show for us, and I think in Las Vegas, correct? Is that where it is?
No, Vancouver.
Where is it?
Vancouver, B.C.
Oh. You couldn't get Las Vegas? She whiz, lady. You know, anyway, we're, we're gonna be holding it on the night, Monday the night, which is the second Monday of the month, at 6:30, and it will be right here as usual. So with that in mind, unless I'm forgetting anything, and if I am, Counsel, I'm sure you'll remind me. Yes, sir?
Thank you. I'll make it quick here.
Oh, I sure...
Good to, good to look forward to the opportunity to wish Gold Beach happy birthday. Now, I was born here, not quite that much...
You're not holding a kiss?
Not quite.
I'm sorry.
But I wanna thank you, Mayor, for your work with the Oregon Trail, and especially SOD. That's a disease that, we've been able to raise a lot of funds, we're getting a lot of attention, OSU, Oregon Department of Agriculture, of course, the Oregon Department of Forestry, BLM, Forest Service, and having you at those meetings has been very good. And then Counsel Kaufman, you mentioned earlier today the housing task force meeting, the amount of work that's being done at Gold Beach towards development and housing. I, you know, when I heard you report in a, in a collective way, I thought, wow, that really is good news for Central Florida County, and problems are being solved. The, and Administrator Fritz, you mentioned Brett Wydermiller and the, and the amount of, that's some of the best news I've heard in a long time. All of our 13 rural fire departments are shorthanded and are being curried and need support, so that's really good. Related to that, I really wanna thank the mayor, and administrator, and the council for the amount of work that you did in the very beginning on the rural regional fire training and emergency facility. You know, we spent a lot of time with Senator Wyden, and he's good friends with the governor. We're trying to raise that $880,000 to purchase the property, the Old Mill site, in about two weeks, but, and he did call the governor on our behalf, so I'm very grateful for that. And I think that's just a matter of time. We keep working towards that, we're gonna get that property, and that's gonna open up a tremendous economic bit of activity for training for our county and our citizens. And, you know, people ask what keeps me up at night, and that's the threat of more catastrophic fires, so thanks for all the work you're doing on the fire. You know, our whole healthcare system is improving, the emergency facility's opened in Brookings, so all of our cities are well managed, I'm happy to report some. I'd say the county's working on, or may not be there yet, but also, finally, I wanna say, thank you, Mr. DeVal. Huscanadon is holding. You only have to worry one more month, okay? Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Like I said, it's always good to see you here, sir. And I wanna thank you for the, all the work that you continuously do on behalf of this county. You do a lot, and I personally appreciate it a great deal. If there is no other comments, and please forgive me, I went directly from Mr. MacArthur to, "Let's get the heck out of here." So now I'm going to, "Let's get the heck out of here." So unless there's an objection, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I knew I could count on you, Counsel.
Second, sir.
Yeah. Have you got the second?
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna bother with discussion, question.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
All right.
You must give a vote on it first.
Meeting adjourned.